I've created a monster. It's like, I'm so excited from shut off the water, shut off the water. So I can stop mowing twice a week and trimming.
You mow twice a week, the same ground or two different parts?
Twice a week.
The same ground?
Why do you do it twice a week?
Well, because I mulch it, because I mulch it, it grows so fast that if I don't, if I don't, it's a mess.
That's why it looks so perfect.
So that's why I have to mow it twice a week to keep, so the mulcher will work.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's the most thought out.
I don't want to, I don't want to pick up the grass because I pay for a lawn treatment that comes in and treats the lawn.
Yeah.
Which you don't want to suck it up and throw it in the trash can.
Yeah, you are creating a monster.
I know, I know I have.
It is the most thought out yard I've ever seen.
I never, I never, I never thought I was going to retire and care so much about my yard, really.
That's what old people do.
I guess I'm getting older, you know.
How are you?
How are you? Hey, go hang out down here.
Yeah, you don't get too comfortable. So Steve actually won't be able to be here, so.
Steve, Steve won't be here.
Count your minutes.
At least you don't have to run the meeting like Steve does, you can just take the end of the round.
He didn't have a room or something? And so we went home and, but then his doctor said, hey, you had a little stroke.
He had a stroke? And so what did they do?
They sent him home and just said, you know, I guess it wasn't serious enough that I had to treat him or anything like that.
So.
Maybe it was good he didn't have this surgery, you know.
So did he have a clot on the bleed or?
They have one, so they're going to do it later.
That's weird. But he didn't fill up to being a nurse?
The doctor told him to stay, because of his stroke, stayed down for a couple of weeks.
That's been at another small one, too.
Okay.
Scary, scary stuff.
My line.
Is that Steve who had a stroke?
Yeah, but I don't think it was too serious, but.
It was just a small block or something. Yeah, I, I hadn't heard that, I was going to send him a card.
Where did Michael go?
We need to go ahead and get started, don't we? Hi, Jared.
Hi, Jared. Did your son?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
He's, he's, he's in our ward and he's a cute boy.
Okay. He did a report and everything, huh?
Not yet.
You got a granddaughter about his age?
Yeah, I did, well.
I do.
Don't want to get him married off.
No.
I have a daughter about his age, so.
That's right, we talked about that.
Twenty.
He's twenty.
You ready to go, Mike?
I have to.
You have a recorder? Oh, it's gone, okay, we're good to go. Take one and pass it down. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome you tonight to this Linden City Planning Commission meeting. We welcome those who are here with us tonight or online. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and to discuss the situations for our city. Tonight, we'd like to begin by having an invocation, which will be offered by Karen Danielson, and then a pledge of allegiance led by Sharon Call.
Dr. Helmey, Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet and to address the needs of our city. We pray that as we look at the agenda items, that we will do what's best for the people in our city and we can make good decisions and we are grateful for this country that we live in and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to have a roll call of our commissioners at this time. Sharon Call.
Here.
Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Rob Callis, here. Steve Johnson is excused, he's having some medical procedures, we wish him the best. Scott Thompson.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
Karen Danielson.
Here.
And Ryan Doan.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get into the administrative portion of our planning commission meeting, I'd like to just make one comment. It's with heavy hearts that we have lost one of our friends and prior planning commission commissioners and city councilmen after serving on the planning commission. Brother or Mr. Mike Venturi, a neighbor to many of us. Mike was involved in a, in an accident, ATV accident, and then as he was recovering in a recovery center, he passed out and passed away. So we wish his family the very best and let the city know and we appreciate his service of many years in the planning commission and the city council, we'll miss him. We all, we set aside a little time at the beginning of our meeting for any public comment. We invite anyone who has a matter of information or question that is not on the agenda tonight to come forward and, and ask or present that. Is there anyone that has anything like that tonight?
Question.
Yes.
Is this, is this for the, for us? Is that question for audience members or is that for you?
For you, yes.
Is this the venue where it's going to be discussed, potential purchase by Linden Trust for a property down on the, on the west side, is this tonight?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda, okay.
That's on the agenda, yes, okay. We'll get to that a little bit later. We would like to approve our minutes of last meeting, September tenth, 2024. Those minutes were published and given to the planning commissioners for review. Has everybody had a chance to review them and is there any changes that anyone has noticed that need to be made?
I had just, well, this is just a real small one, but just because it's a name in line two, I think Corbett has two Ts rather than just one. And, and just because it's a name, I thought that should be corrected. And then down where?
What line was that?
Line two. I don't see that on line two, where?
Right up on current, under four on current business in the minutes.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay. And then down where, you know, we go through the conditions and that. And I believe it, it looks like you were, you were there that evening, weren't you? And I don't see your name on the, on the approvals.
Oh, I didn't even notice that, that I was here and I did approve it.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's all I got?
That's all? Okay, with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of, of that meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now for tonight's agenda, we go to item number four. This is a minor subdivision approval by Builders First Source, 145 South Geneva Road. This is kind of a continuation of our discussion last time. So we're going to turn this over to staff for presentation.
Hi, thank you, commissioners. So for item number four, you might recall around July of this, this year, we looked at the same property to be rezoned, a little portion here in the back of ninety-six South, eight hundred West and eighty-eight South, eight hundred West, upon approval of a subdivision, upon subdivision approval. And so that's what we're going to be doing here today. The applicant submitted an application for minor subdivision of three lots. The first lot being 145 South Geneva Road encompassing the Builders First Source and then lots two and three being those two residential properties. So some key items that are on the staff report that you were, were given is, oh, and actually the applicant is here as well. If they'd like to come up to the front as well. So.
Is the applicant here? Are you representing him? Why don't you come on up, Roger?
So the subdivision.
State your name for the record.
I'm Roger Dudley, I'm the engineer for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, so the subdivision itself is encompassing about thirteen, almost thirteen and a half acres of land. Something to note is that lots two and three were previously non-conforming. Normally subdivision requirements state that a subdivision shouldn't be more than three times as long as it is wide. And both of these lots are about a hundred feet wide and they're currently seven hundred and seventy-nine feet long. And so they're currently non-conforming and then with this current subdivision application, it would be still non-conforming but brought further into compliance with approval of this. So this is the, what is currently existing on that property and this is what's being proposed by the applicant. The main thing is this, about two acres of, of land that will cover in a later item about what will be, this will be used for. And I'll also bring your attention to this little area here. Because these are fairly older parcels, they did have a bit of roadway deeded over to those parcels. And so as a condition of subdivision approval, the applicants agreed to dedicate this part of the street to the city. And then normally we would also require that sidewalks be installed around the subdivision areas, but due to the existing conditions of eight hundred West here, we're going to forego that on, on this side. And the main reason for that is, here is the, some of the two properties here. There are some existing telephone poles in this area that would normally be where the sidewalk is. And so that's because those are already existing there, the city wouldn't require that for the subdivision approval for this. And then one other thing to note as well is there currently is about a seven and a half foot, or seven, seven feet concrete fence between the Builders First Source property and the two residential lots. And one of the conditions is after the subdivision's been approved, that the applicant will move this fence back to the new adjusted property line here. Other than that, the property, it's, I guess the subdivision itself meets all the other requirements for subdivision approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for this.
So on the sidewalk curb and gutter on those lots, is the thought that they will be required when developed?
We don't, we don't have any plans to put it in because we don't have any storm drain on that side of the street either. So not only do you don't have power, you have the power poles in place, but there's no storm drain either. So that's why we're not requiring the curb gutter and sidewalk.
The curb gutter and sidewalk are south of these two lots and north of these two lots?
There are, there are, yes, but I'm not sure why they were required to put those in, but at some point they, they were, but.
But there's no storm drain north and south, or there is?
On that side of the road, there is not.
So that, but they have the curb gutter?
Yeah.
So the water has nowhere to go?
Right. So that's why we're not requiring it in front of these lots, so. Otherwise, we're just pushing it on to someone else, so.
Are there any questions by commissioners on this, what's been presented?
So if I understand correctly, the two existing residential lots are going to remain residential lots owned by the current owners. They're just selling off the deep portion of their lot.
Yes, that's correct.
So in July, the city council and planning commission rezoned the, the back parts of their property, the light industrial. And now the, and one of the conditions of approval of the zone change was that they come back for a subdivision approval of that. And so the, the single-family lots will maintain the minimum lot size and then the back half or back two-thirds will go to Builders First Source.
Britton, will you go to that plan you showed where, showed the block wall?
Yes.
So when you move that block wall up to the rear of what will be the lots, is there a block wall now that, on the north of the property? That's the north.
Is that a block wall to the right?
Between the.
Right there.
Yeah, along that way, yeah.
Is that a block wall?
The property owners are shaking their head, yes.
There he is.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a concrete wall, okay.
Which meets code and, and, okay. So that, that will separate those for this property as well as the new lots.
That's right. Any, any of the fences that are on the Builders First Source property that are abutting residential property will have a concrete fence and then when it's adjacent to another industrial lot or a non-residential, they have, they currently have a chain link fence for that, so.
So that block wall, it looks like a block wall from here, maybe it isn't, on the south, right there?
Yes.
Not there, but going north, east and west.
I can pull up the, going east and west.
From there, to your left.
Yes, so that'll be, that'll be that concrete block, block wall.
Is that a concrete block wall?
Yeah, right there it is.
So that won't actually be required?
No, they could take that down.
Okay, they could take that down, okay. All right, are there any other comments or questions by commissioners?
Just, what, what's, what, what is, what is your current planned use for this property?
Yeah, it's basically just an expansion of Builders First Choice, their storage yard. They're running out of space, they're, they're just going to asphalt it and of course fence it with the, with the concrete panel fences, provide storm drainage for that and then just use it for, for product storage. So they've outgrown themselves a little bit, so that's the purpose in purchasing the property, yeah.
So, so they won't actually be working back there? They won't actually be producing product up there?
No, it'll just be for product storage and trust storage. They store product that's used to build the trusses and then they store the trusses after they're built. There'll be some forklifts that come in and out of the area, but other than that, I don't, I don't know of any activity that would.
Where does the actual, I know we've gotten some information, where does the actual, I mean, where they actually build things as far as noise and those kind of things? Where is that, where is that actually happening?
That's in the large building that's already there, if we had an aerial, you see that large facility there? The trusses are all produced inside that building. And then the, the product, the lumber goes into that building and they come out as trusses. And then the area north of the big building is for the trust storage after they're constructed.
Yeah, so this, this won't be, bring the construction any closer to the residence?
No, no, it'll just be, if you see the area where the, the trusses are being stored, it'll be an expansion of that area for more storage of the product.
Is there any indication of how high those items will be stored? And is, seems like we've dealt with that on other lots where we've said they can't be over a certain height?
You know, I'm not sure on that, I, I don't think it's very high, I'm not sure that it'd be visible above the fence. The fence is a seven-foot fence. I don't, I don't believe they stack them higher than that, I'm not sure.
Racks or anything like that?
No, no, they're stacked on the ground or on the asphalt, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
We have received complaints regarding horns going off. What's the purpose of those horns? Is there, is there, is that a beginning of the shift, begin? What is the purpose for that?
I'm not sure I can answer that. My thought is that it might be the warning horns that are on maybe the forklifts as they back up. There may be some sound. I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I know on some of the equipment, often when it backs up, then they beep. It's not a horn, I don't believe, unless there's a shift change, I'm not familiar with that.
That's not the sound that's being described in the letters coming to us, but.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have that information, so I'm sorry.
If it's the forklifts, we don't want them any closer to the houses, then, right?
This isn't a public hearing, but you folks, it must be the ones living close, what's your names? Would you like to ask a question about that or? Would you come up to the table and, Roger, let them?
You can both come on.
And these are good friends of Campbell's who were selling up there, too.
Okay.
We love them.
Just come forward so that we can hear the comments in the microphone and state your names, if you would.
Chrissanne Gottfritzin.
Ryan Gottfritzin.
Thank you.
We moved here five years ago from Texas, excited to be in a one-acre, quiet, peaceful area and we've been tempted to move because of the noise of Linden Trust. It really, it's very bothersome. It'll stop temporarily, then come back, then stop temporarily, we're not able to sleep outside like we thought we'd be able to. Then when we have neighbor, you know, people come stay with us in our backyard, they comment on it. It's really bothersome day and night.
Yeah, like, two in the morning, three in the morning.
Is it, do you feel like it's the equipment moving the trusses?
No. One, one, one morning at three AM, Chrissanne went to go figure out what was going on and, and you want to explain?
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, they were kind, they just didn't, they're probably immune to it because they hear it all the time. But they, they just said, oh, we're sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I don't remember.
Like meh!
Yeah, it's really.
Meh! Meh!
For the record.
That's triggering for me.
All day, all night, that's why we wanted to move anyway.
What is the noise?
Where's it coming from?
I don't know, is it like when they're back, you know, it's multiple times even in a five-minute period, so.
Is it in the building or outside?
In the building, it's when I was there, I accidentally overstepped the bounds, I didn't know, anyway, I was looking, I said, where's the manager?
It's like an alarm.
At two in the morning, I was trying to sleep, it was like, it was snowy, anyway, yeah, so, so I walked over and they said, the manager's over there, so I started walking, he's like, yeah, you're not supposed to be in this area. But I was like, that is what's making the sound that I'm hearing all night long, so.
And what was it?
It's like, I, what was it, like, when, maybe, it's a backing up, a wood something?
He's probably not familiar with that, but.
I'm not, it, it, I wonder if it's not the, the equipment.
Yeah, but it's not a, it's, it's a constant, maybe it's like when the wood hits something, but it's.
It's like a big alarm from the big equipment inside the, inside the building.
There's never an hour that goes by that we don't hear it, but it's often like multiple times within five minutes. And it's day and night, it stopped during COVID, thankfully, but.
And it stops when, when we say something, they're very, they've been, the, the foreman there has been really kind.
Mike.
Really kind, and then it will stop temporarily, but then it'll just start coming back. And the other thing is just the, the light, the lights are, I can read a book in our backyard at one in the morning just by turning it towards them, because they have really, really bright lights and they have, I'm assuming they feel like they need to illuminate the yard. So we, we just have concerns if that yard's expanding, that light, that, I mean, it's just extremely bright. I mean, it shines at our, our window all night long, so we, so it's light in our bedroom all night long. So that, that, we love our neighbors, we want them to achieve their dreams and it seems a reasonable kind of zoning decision. We just don't, we, we, we are concerned that, and, and thank you for hearing us, I know it's not a public, thank you, but in, in five years it might be fine, what about ten years from now? We're, we're here for the long term and, you know, if they're owners, owners of the property, it's to stop them from expanding production that direction, that's, we just have a concern about that.
Okay.
Where is the house, I'm sorry, what house do you live in?
Um, that's it, oh, you're, you're, nope, one, one, one over, that's it. Nope, that's the, yeah, that's us, that's us right there.
Okay.
So.
Well, thank you.
We take this happen to you.
It sounds like we need to talk with another group, not, not Roger, but. Usually sound from equipment is usually something that they have to do for safety of the workers. Don't know if OSHA would let you turn it off, but maybe can turn down.
Are the doors open all the time?
It goes down temporarily and then it goes back up. So like, we brought him thank you gifts and he has to say, thank you so much for stopping the noise and then next week it's noisy again, so.
I, I think it's when the doors are open, I think we hear it a lot.
Okay, yeah. Well, maybe staff can talk to them.
I got a question for the Campbells, they live, they live even closer than Gottfritzin's.
Would you like to come?
Have you guys ever got to the bottom of the, the noise and where it comes from?
Please come forward, yes.
Because those back, backing up things, they're not going to be able to turn those off, but what, what is the horn?
Blake Campbell and Diane Campbell here. We haven't checked in on that, we could speculate, I would assume it would be a shift change or a machine that's got a process that's telling the workers, hey, I'm done with this trust or something like that.
Well, if it's a shift change, it only happens once and from what I hear, it's happening a lot.
And we, we hear it over at our property and.
We just got, I, I heard the phone, I heard the train too when I first bought the property and thought, huh. I didn't, I didn't know about the train, but I, I got used to it and I don't even hear it anymore. The thing that bothered us the most when that building went up are the lights. And my husband at the time complained and they adjusted the lights. It used to, it used to keep my chickens up all the time because I had, I had a, an automatic door closing.
Roosters were crawling all the time, huh?
And, and they would, could never go to sleep because the door wouldn't close and they wouldn't, you know, be feeling safe. It's an automatic door, but they adjusted the light and, and it fixed it. But I don't hear the noise that they're talking about and it, and I don't have hard, I'm not hard of hearing. I just, maybe I'm used to it. He says.
In the part of the house that has single pane windows, it's kind of background noise all the time.
All the time?
Well, I mean, it's a pretty loud plant.
Okay.
Just, just low background noise. And then the weird buzzing, and then you can definitely hear the backing and forwarding of the forklifts.
Is it a twenty-four-hour plant?
Definitely, sometimes they're working some late shifts, for sure, they've been really busy.
Okay, thank you.
It's not always a twenty-four hour, I, I don't think they're there at all on Sundays, but they, they have a night shift and I don't think they have, I haven't heard, maybe I just sleep soundly, but I haven't heard, heard any noise like graveyard shift or whatever you call it from midnight on, but they've heard it, so it must be there, I mean.
Where is your home?
They're one of the parcels being split off, Sharon, to the trust plan.
But your home is?
It's up, it's, it's about the same distance from the street as theirs. I mean, eight hundred West is actually noisier, noisier to me than the business behind. to me than the business behind, behind us. That is, you know, 25 miles an hour and cars zoom past at 50, you know? So there's a lot of street noise that's more an- annoying to me than
Yeah.
the business, but, um, and the lights were fixed. Uh, maybe they aimed him to, at them. I don't know.
Her house is the south property that's being split and rezoned.
Yeah, that's where he's pointing. That's my house. And then, um, the Godfritsons are one, two, three houses away from us.
Pretty close.
Um, and there's actually an empty lot, uh, between their house. So there's like, it's almost four lots away from us. But I just wondered if maybe they were hearing noises from this other trust company on the corner, but she, she's gone to the business and her, heard it, so that's, you know, I'm pretty sure.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, city staff, we'll, we'll look into this and we've got a enforcement person, and so we'll, we'll look into it and see. We, we may have you get us some video or some sound or something like that. We're not always here, but. Um, if you'll contact, uh, Britten or myself, um, we'll get you our contact information afterwards and then we can work on that.
And I'll contact OSHA, see if they can loosen up.
Yeah, good luck with that. Uh, it sounds like, uh, just to staff that, you know, usually you can make some adjustments if you're a property owner for light lossage and, and that. That should be fairly easy. Sound, I don't know, but I'm sure that that can be worked out with the ownership through staff.
And maybe they could close the doors more often when they're working.
It almost sounds like it's, maybe something gets jammed in a machine and it puts off a warning, a warning alarm. And, uh, uh, my mother-in-law that just passed away was, she had a hard time sleeping and, and it would set her off. She's right next door to the Hills. So come across, everything's on the west side there. Yeah, that's, that's, uh, which basically, uh, my wife and her siblings own now, that I will be purchasing that property. The, uh, I know, uh, you know, the, the, the backing up didn't bother her, but what Godfritsen are referring to was, would wake her up at night and then she couldn't go back to sleep.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll let staff investigate that. Thank you very much for your comments.
We, we do have sound ordinances and they do need to be enforced and, and the lighting is also something that can be.
Sounds like maybe the lighting has been taken care of.
Yep, it was for us.
But, but it sounds like it might be not for the Godfritsen.
Actually, if the lights are moved closer to you and pointed the other way, it might be better.
Yeah.
But, uh, we'll, we'll let staff work that out and see.
Wish that poor Roger doesn't know what's, what's going on there, but if the trust people were here, we could, you know, kind of hold their feet to the fire a little bit, so.
Okay, well, let's bring it back here to commission. Yes?
I had a question on, uh, the properties just north and south. Are they also zoned industrial already?
Which properties are you referring to?
So we're going to have that new, those, those two homes that are splitting off, so they'll, those will be part of the trust plan.
That shows the deep lots.
The lines were removed on the properties to the north, increasing the commercial property.
To the, to the east.
Mother-in-law's house to the north. So put that on the pay residence there next to Hills.
You can see the yellow line there now.
They're going to bring their line up a little bit closer to their homes in the proposal that, that we approved preliminarily a few months ago.
So my question is. Light industrial.
And on the master plan, it was shown for years that it would eventually be used that way.
Light industrial.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions by any of the commissioners?
I'm wondering if there's any concern. I mean, their concern is bringing the noise closer to them. Obviously, if it's in the building, it's not. But even the light, like, they're going to have to have lights for those, where they're putting the trusses and everything. Are we going to have some regulation on that?
So, so we do have regulation on that.
Yeah.
Uh, we probably just need to confirm that it's being banned.
Yeah, because as they move closer, they'll have lights in that lot as well.
And actually, that's what I was saying. You can almost make it better because you can put the pole on the back shining the other way.
Right.
And.
See if it'll help.
You know, Roger.
Yeah, and I think they're called directional lighting.
Mm-hmm.
We see that a lot in shopping centers and other places that are adjacent to residential. So they can be aimed down and they can be blocked.
Shielded even behind.
It's fairly, uh, fairly normal to have directional lighting. That's what they call it, I think. So I'll mention that to, uh, to them as well as the noise so that they're aware.
Mention that to them, Roger, and then staff, can you ensure when they come in for a building permit that these items are all mitigated by just meeting the o- ordinance?
Yeah, they won't be getting a building permit, but, but we will, um, before we issue final engineering approval.
Right.
You know, we'll check those things out.
Because it sounds like it, there's a few things that maybe didn't get really set up the way they should have been on the first phase of their project, and now would be the time to correct it.
Okay, so this is a minor subdivision approval. If there's no other questions by commissioners, uh, do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for minor subdivision approval of the builder's first source plat, a subdivision plat with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents and plat. Two, if required, complete or post inadequate improvement, completion assur- assurance warrant and post required assurance for all required public infrastructure improvements. Three, prior to plat recording, the applicant will update the final plat Mylar to include notarized signatures of owner's consent to dedication and obtain signatures of all entities indicated on the subdivision plat attached here. Two, four, the plans and plat will meet and be constructed as per applicable specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual and five, all items of the staff report.
Okay, and then all items that you referred to will be addressed in their request for building permit.
Could we add a mo- something there so that, that, that builder's choice will work with the city regarding?
Well, this is not on this one, I don't think, right?
Not on the subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, the motion is approved.
Now we go to item number five, which is also on this parcel. Let me find it. There we go. This is amended site plan approval for builder's first source, 145 South Geneva Road. And, uh, Britten, I guess you're our staff member presenting this also, so would you go ahead and present it?
Yes, so, um, so item five is, uh, more of the formal, uh, application for a amended site plan approval of, uh, this area, this two acre plot of land that we've been discussing previously. Um, the intended use of it is, uh, as we discussed, for product storage. Uh, builder's first source plans to use it for, uh, just trust storage. There's not, they're not going to be building anything, um, on here. It's just going to be paved asphalt with the fence moved to the new updated property line and then with, uh, new storm dr- new storm drain utilities added, uh, in, onto the, onto the parcels as well. Um, one thing I know as well is, uh, back in 2018, when this, uh, building was first being approved, uh, the public, or the planning commission waived landscaping in the back area here, um, mainly due to, uh, the fences blocking, uh, the view of the landscaping outright, so it wouldn't really be serving too much of a purpose. And so for that reason, uh, the city isn't requiring that uh, for this amended site plan approval either. For the actual things that will be added in here, we have a, some, some storm drain utilities being added here, um, with the requirements here, and.
So is that just a, um, leach line or what is it, Rod, uh, Michael or Roger?
It's a storm check. It's a detention system, underground detention.
All right.
Yeah.
So, and I'll be connecting to the existing, uh, stormwater, uh, utilities that are on that property there. This is the, uh, previous, uh, subdivision, or site plan that got approved in 2018. Um, since then, they've removed this, uh, existing building and built this one here. Um, and this was the landscaping that was, uh, approved back then, uh, mostly in the, the front area here. Um, I also wanted to bring to attention, uh, just what it would, would look like in the front. Um, so this is the, uh, Linden Trust building that we were looking at, uh, with some of that landscaping. They have, uh, fairly tall, um, fence on, on this side here, so, um, this is going, going down through, on this road here on, along Geneva. Um, and then this is from a different perspective. It's, um, it's, it's a pretty grainy photo, but you can kind of see where that, um, concrete fence is. Uh, it appears to be the sort of assorted brick color there. Um, and again, this was taken from the Google, uh, attachment. So anyone who's driving in a car or just walking down the street wouldn't be able to see over this fence normally. And overall, I think the main purpose of adding to this, uh, property with additional storage is to continue that, uh, to make sure that this trusses don't get stacked, uh, too high as we were discussing and, uh, so that they can kind of keep that, uh, appearance up there. But, and then, uh, the engineering department is also going to be looking to make sure that the utilities being added are meeting the city code. Uh, other than that, we're happy to answer any other questions you might have about the property or about.
Last, last time this property was brought before us, there was a lengthy discussion on their request for landscaping along Geneva Road. Was that resolved or will that be brought up again when they do their building permit? Because I think we continued that for resolution, didn't we?
I don't remember.
I don't, we, we approved, you know, they already had the existing landscaping along Geneva.
Right.
All they did last time was add the landscaping to the south side of the building and around the parking lot. And then the pla- and then the planning commission waived the landscaping next to the wall because the residents wouldn't see it.
Didn't we talk about the landscaping on Geneva Road or was that another?
Oh, you're, you're thinking of the.
That was the one, the one month ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one over there on the other trust property.
Yeah, okay, I got it mixed up.
On, next to the old city.
Yeah, that's right.
City pump house.
Okay, withdraw.
Rob, on that landscaping, I just have a question. Is it true the residents wouldn't see it? Because I, I drove past there on the house side and it's, uh, slanted and there's quite a grade from those homes. So yes, if you're right next to the fence, you wouldn't see it.
You've got a seven-foot tall fence. I'm not sure you'd see 10 feet of landscaping.
You wouldn't see the grass. Would trees be valuable? It's just a.
In the back, yeah.
Okay.
And it may help with the lighting or shoes or some, or something, but if they're only planting them every 30 feet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it'll help with the noise issue.
Okay. All right. Any other questions by commissioners?
Consider that. I don't, I don't like it this, I, I think you should consider it, but don't, you know.
Are there any thoughts on that landscaping you must?
I don't know. I just, I, we keep saying residents won't be able to see it. You wouldn't be able to see the grass for sure, but.
Right.
I mean, trees could be helpful.
Which, which, which section are we referring to?
Right on the back.
Where they're, where they're, the new, the new property line?
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we work with, that may be part of mitigation light, you know, you could put what's a tall, fast-growing trees closer than 30 feet. That may be, that may be something that you, they could work with, with builder's choice to try to resolve the.
Probably.
You know, it's not going to be overnight.
Their vacant lots are not developed.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying the back of their lot, yeah.
Well, it, it, it is directly in back of Campbell's property. Would you like to see some trees back there?
Yeah.
See? You know, they're.
Water chairs, I can water all.
Could you work with, with, with them to have them give you an allowance to plant them on your side? I mean, I just don't think things are going to be maintained back in that corner. And we're always talking about water savings and we're flipping the strip and we're changing landscaping requirements and that kind of stuff. Why are we going to require things that need to be watered on a commercial lot way in the back? That, to me, that doesn't make sense. But as a good faith and working with neighbors, if they wanted to give you an allowance to go buy some trees at Linden Nursery, I think that'd be a nice gesture, but I just don't see the need to require it.
I could comment. If we wanted the trees, seems like the trees should be maybe on the Campbell's side of the fence as a, if, if that was what they wanted to do.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yes, builder's choice would have to bring water clear from Geneva Road all the way through their parking or all the way through their plant just to get water to those few trees. Uh, that would be a fairly sizable expense to them. The trees might be better. I'm not sure if the Campbells or the Hills, they have their buildings back there. Uh, if they, you know, if they wanted trees, maybe builder's first choice could donate those trees and they could be planted on their side and then could be irrigated from their system, from their system.
Why don't you give a thought to that, neighbors, and s- take a look and see if you have room and that could be something that could be discussed.
Sure.
I thought about it, yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Are there any other questions by commissioners? If not, let's entertain a motion.
I will make the motion, but I will add to it the fact that they will, that, um, that builder's first source will work with the, with this, with the city to resolve the, any lighting or noise issues.
Do you want the trees to?
They already closed the contract on the purchase of these?
Contract should close next week.
Well, put that in the real estate purchase contract that they owe you some trees.
Don't touch that contract.
I'm just saying, I mean, I don't think it's something that, that the city needs to be involved.
Yeah, we don't.
I don't know if we want to save, I don't say we want to save the trees. We don't want, just because they want them, we can't force them to do it. But I think we can, we can say that you need to work with the city to determine. That may be the solution. The city.
You'd say trees need to be installed, whether you work, put them in yourself or work with the next door property owner or. You gotta, you gotta give us.
Make it part of the motion, mm-hmm.
Or, or ensure that the lighting will not flood into neighbors' property, period.
I think the noise is more of a bothersome to the Godfritsen's than the lights. The noise bothers me the most. The light bothers him the most, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I do wonder, do you guys feel better knowing what their goal is and their plan with that lot?
Uh, we already knew from Holly Hill, uh, she'd already said that, but then, I guess, it's just in the five years we've been here, we've heard, oh, it'll stop so many times that we wish we could trust that, but we don't know how long that will be. So I, we wish there was something that would say till, near 3,000, I don't know.
I, backing up against a manufacturing plant of trusses, I think you have to assume you're not going to have it go away. It's a matter of how do you mitigate it or live with it some way.
Yeah, they ha- they do have to do their work.
Yeah. So, okay, do we want to make the tree issue and the light issue as part of this motion? If so, let's hear a motion and see how.
Not sure how that's going to, so how would you want that to be? You would.
Well, I think staff can.
Which may, you know, to re- work with staff to remediate, to mediate.
Well, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, I, I think, Michael, you're saying, hey, we can't do anything unless you make it part of the motion. that they be required to plant trees. And as far as where they're planted, then we can work it out. But they can't just go to the owners and say, you have to put some trees, because that's not part of the code.
So we're asking for trees along the east boundary line of the property?
On one side or the other?
The order you're suggesting it as a way to...
Right, I, I like that better, than saying it's, they have to do it, which may include trees along the west property line to help mitigate sound and light. Okay.
More than likely, we'll, we'll just have someone go to the property line, like, you know, they can hire somebody and measure the light.
Yeah.
If it doesn't spill over, then, then it should be good.
That will be addressed during their building permit application, right?
Okay, I will try this.
All right, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the applicant's request for amended site plan approval for 145 South Geneva Road with the following conditions. The applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents. The plans will meet development specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual. If required, complete or post an adequate improvement completion assurance warrant and post required warranty assurance for all required public infrastructure improvements. Final building and site plans will meet Linden's light industrial ordinance requirements. All fire codes shall be met. Number six, the Builders First Choice will work with this, with the city to try to mitigate light and, light and sound issues regarding the property, which may include trees along the west boundary of the pro, of the proposed property. Actually, the east boundary. West, east boundary, excuse me, east boundary.
But what about the, okay, never mind. Because the north is a commercial thing, I mean, okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'm, I'll second it.
Okay, Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pass that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I also compliment your staff, Michael and Britton and, and Noah, they're all gracious. It's, it's kind of refreshing to work in Linden. We don't have that much fun in other places, so I compliment...
We're easier than New York City and Los Angeles, aren't we?
They, they do a, they do a really good job here.
Okay, well, thank you, that's kind of you to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I believe that covers the two items that are on the agenda. Michael, do you need to be excused now?
If you're okay, if you have anything you'd like to...
Well, he has to run.
I think you should.
Well, next meeting, I we don't have a lot yet, and so...
But it's next meeting next week?
No, it's the 29th.
They've moved to the twen, okay, it's the 29th.
I won't, I won't be to that meeting at senior night, and I want to be out on the court with my daughter. But we're still trying to determine if we will have a meeting or not. So, you know, we're, we're not quite, some applications are, are moving along, but I'm just not sure if they'll be ready or not. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. So plan on it, unless you hear from us.
I will be available for that meeting, so if, if it is your off.
I might not be able to, it depends how things go that day, so.
Well, I can't be two people, so.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'll keep you posted, too.
Cheer on, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for your work. I was going to, I, I failed to recognize Lincoln Jacobs from our city council, and he stepped out, looks like he's talking to one of the applicants out in the lobby. But we're always glad to have his representation and comments. He made a suggestion, well, let's see. Our, our report, do we have anything that staff needs to report on other than that, what we've already done?
Nothing of too, nothing too imperative. Though, we feel as you, you, you guys being members of the planning commission, you might want to know about a new thing that we've done for code enforcement. If you ever happen to talk to any residents who have any concerns about something, whether it be noise complaints or maybe excess weeds that aren't being taken care of, you can direct them to our community development department page and this section for code enforcement. If they hit submit a complaint here, we have a new form that will be used to record those, those complaints. So that might be a helpful resource.
We have to put our name on it?
Yeah, you do. That's the first thing I said.
We've also received a new, we've hired a new code enforcement officer who you might be meeting in the next coming...
That is good, I think that's a good idea.
Cobb Rallis.
Alias, huh? Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff tonight before we adjourn?
I, I signed up for this Urban Land Institute workshop or whatever on November...
Yeah, when was that?
It's the one that they sent out.
I'd invite you to join me.
Michael sent out a, a notice on that last Friday, I think.
Actually, I have it in my calendar.
Yeah, I think it is, and I can't do that.
It is on Friday, November 8th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
I would absolutely do it, but I can't do it on a Friday, so.
8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, where's it located?
Lehigh, I think it's in the city office buildings. And Mike or Britton sent out a email, and he just emailed the lady. She was, got right back to me with confirmation on registration, so. Thought it'd be an easy way to knock out the...
They're four hours.
I think, I can...
Can you education?
Looks like I can probably join you on that one.
Will do, so.
What do I do, what do I do to sign up for it?
So I can send you some of the registration information for, for that.
Okay, yeah, send it to me, I'll see what I can do.
I, I really enjoy, I couldn't go to both days, but I went to the Thursday of the APA conference, and, and I really enjoyed a lot of that. The one I enjoyed most was the one where they really gave a vision of what's going to be happening on the Utah City.
Oh, wow.
You know, they gave quite a presentation on the, you know, the build out of that. That was really interesting on, on, you know, from where they're at now to...
That would have been very interesting.
Yeah, it was a very good presentation on it all.
That was very good.
It's, it's amazing to try to visualize that really happening. But, and then, because it was in Provo, they, part of it was they had, you know, the keynote was having Mayor Cuffusi, you know? And, and she did a really fun presentation of everything that's happening in Provo and all the new developments and that kind of thing. So those, those things are really interesting.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of the other classes were really interesting, too. I really enjoyed it, and of course, you always have a few that aren't so much so. But appreciated that opportunity and wished I could have gone on Friday also.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, Lincoln made a good suggestion, I thought, prior to the meeting. And that is maybe, again, with the announcement and the passing of Mike Van Cherry, that we just kind of, if, if you sorrow inclined, give us any thoughts you have on our relationship with Michael and the experiences we've had with Michael. I think three of us or four of us were you that he was on?
He was, and I guess I'll just say that I, I'm shocked. This is the first I'm hearing about that. He's, he's in my stake, he's in my neighborhood, and I, I had not heard that news. And I've known Mike for a number of years, not very closely, but during the 2008 downturn, I had an office building that I was building, and I was fairly young. I thought I was going to go bankrupt. I mean, I, because we were finishing this building and we needed to pull some permanent financing, and the lenders, the banks were like, you know, they were being told not to lend any money at that time, in the fall of 2008. Well, it took some time, but Mike actually helped me get a, that was his career, was, was doing small business loans. And through the SBA loans, like 504, whatever it is, I can't remember what it was. But anyways, he came through for us in a big way, and appreciated that about him. And then to sort of reconnect with him in Linden and through Linden City Business was pleasant. And I'm really, really shocked.
Taken back, I was too. Anybody else? I, I, I remember Michael, he just, Mike was a fun person to be around. I mean, we, we used to kid each other about his Louisiana roots. And, and he grew up in Louisiana, went to LSU, joined the church, LDS church there. Always felt like he, he had a different perspective on things than some of us, not having always lived here. And it was always good to hear his opinions and, and insights. And, gosh, I was just shocked when I, I heard about it, because it seemed like, I, I think it was the beginning of last week, he and I stopped at the stoplight same time and waved at each other. And then I heard that he had been in this ATV accident, and it resulted in, in his passing. But we're going to miss him. His, his, his viewing is at the Walker Sanderson Marchory Thursday night, and then his funeral's on Saturday in the LD, in the edge, excuse me, Linden Stake Center.
It's in our stake center up on the hill.
Right up, up on the hill, meaning?
Not the one on Center Street, but the one that's...
The Far East Building.
Okay, so the one by my, by the cemetery?
Yeah, no.
No, that's the central, this is the Linden.
The original East Stake Center.
What street is that?
900 East, and then it goes there.
Aserson, Aserson.
Okay, oh, oh, that one up there, okay, and that's Saturday?
Eleven till, you know, viewing, 9:30 to 10:30.
We had, we had, I had, we had kind of a unique experience besides working with city. And of course, this relates to the LDS church. But my husband and I served 18 months in the Utah Orem mission. But Mike happened to be the, the high councilman over, over missionary work in, in the stake. And so we met in his home with all the other mission leaders and full-time missionaries every single week, and he enrolled us home.
So you got to know him real well, his wife especially, too?
Yeah, for, probably a year. And then when we would meet with our state president, he was always a part of that, too. So we met, we, we had very close ties that way, and then got to know his wife, so... Because we're only about a block and a half away, every time they would go walk down the hall, the hill, then they'd stop and visit. So, yeah, we got to know them really well.
He was larger-than-life, he jovial, very fun person to be around.
Always, always laughing, always smiling, and I think it's...
Close friends with he and his wife in, in a number of ways.
I'm good, thank you.
I was very saddened. I became good friends with Mike years ago when the, where he was in the lending business. And I built a lot of commercial buildings that he ended up doing financing for individuals that purchased those buildings. And, but then again, you know, through the association here on Planning Commission, enhanced that long-term relationship with him and whatnot, and, and encouraged him to run for city council, and he did. And I'm a strong, been always a strong advocate of, of Mike. I, when I first heard the news, I was afraid that his cancer had gotten him, because that came back on him, you know? Pretty strong, and so maybe he went out in a much funner way
Yeah.
than, than what could have been there, because it wasn't good, the, the cancer thing he was dealing with. But he didn't let it get him down at all. He kept moving along. Through him and other associations, gotten to know some of his kids over the years. They're big kids. I don't know if you know Bryce or any of them, but I'm like, wow.
I don't know his children very well.
And a line, a kid that could be on the line for BYU and whatnot. But fun, fun, fun guy, we'll miss him a ton.
Yeah, he...
Sharon, are you in there worried now, or?
No, no, we're, the, the boundary line is just the street between us.
Have you talked to Rhonda, are you well enough acquainted with her?
I do know Rhonda really well. I have, I have not talked to her this week. We're going to go to the viewing, and, and we'll go to the services, but... Yeah, I, there's so much, there's so much going on right now. I, I thought I would wait until she's, things kind of settle, and then I'll go out and visit with her. I'm, I'm very comfortable going and visiting with her.
And maybe that's why Mike never complained about his own issues, because he was very concerned about his daughters that were fighting it.
Yeah, and Rhonda's had a lot of health issues, too, yeah, so.
I think just speaks volumes of him, the fact that he came, he, he was here, planning commission, and he felt the desire to continue working for the public, and he went on to city council. And my understanding, the only reason he backed off from city council is because of the family health issues. He'd be still serving today had it not been for his family health issues. So he's very dedicated to Linden.
He was the chair at our, at the Northport Solid Waste Specialty District.
Responsibility, didn't he?
Yeah, so he was, he was still doing that.
Yeah, he was very dedicated to the city.
I just heard through their, or I heard through the grapevines that the, the relief society is having to do a luncheon for 200.
Wow.
So that'll be...
Well, he's a good man, we'll miss him, but he's...
Well, he's got seven children, so there's a lot of, a lot of family.
Work hard where he's at right now, I'm sure.
Yeah, they'll put him to work.
Lincoln, we apologize, I didn't recognize you at the first of the meeting. We did when you were out talking in the lobby. So do you have any thoughts or any comments about Mike?
Not beyond again, you guys, thank you so much. I, I chatted with Ryan, is that right?
Godfitters.
Yeah. And, and he commented just how much he appreciated all of the care that he'd hear from you guys and taking the time to listen and help to, you know, try and figure out and find solutions.
I think it can be resolved. I do.
And I chatted with the engineer, but he, again, he made his compliments, but he shared.
Sure.
It's nice to be a part of an organization, Linden City, with such great staff and council and planning commission, that people actually walk away and say, wow. Right, you guys are all part of that, so.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks for being here with us all the time.
Yep.
I love coming and hanging with you guys.
Okay, if there's no other things, then we need an emotion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Speak up.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we got our invitations, does anybody else plan on attending?
Do you have our invitations for the...
For the grand opening for the Kia, Kia dealer.
When are they doing?
It was the 25th...